Take it away, Ms. Maddie.
Also, after that wonderful tour, it's very important for us tonight to hear information, to hear from you and about the needs of the community as we think about starting preschool. And please make sure that you sign in and give us the information you're requesting. And the surveys are here too. If you do it tonight, great, continue it with you, get it back to us if you want to bring it to people that you know can fill it out but aren't here, please do so. But those are the two important things that need to happen tonight in addition to hearing from you and your needs. I could talk for quite a while about what Dummerston as a school can offer and does offer students every single day. It's a great school and I am so very, very lucky to be a member of this faculty and staff and to be able to say that I'm the principal here. And I say that with complete honesty. I see kids come through those doors every day with smiles on their faces and they go home the same way. And that is a benefit that you can't really measure, but it's so visible and apparent every day that this is a wonderful place to learn and to work together. We have, aside from a solid academic foundation that I think we provide, I think we have and we do have some of the most qualified teachers that work with our students. That teaming, I think, helps us exponentially in terms of academics and socializing and emotional growth for our kids. We have a great art and music program. You know, it's still, we're still working on the halls, but as we get going in the year, and the year progresses, the artwork is phenomenal. People will stop in that have no connection to the school but are, you know, grandparents here just because they remember how great the artwork was when their grandchildren were in school, just to take a tour, look around. The programs that we offer, the events, the community, the concerts are always standing room only. I always consider them the social event of the seasons. We have a vibrant winter activities program that offers kids every year for six weeks from January to February, an opportunity to be out in the winter, skiing, snowboarding, sledding, cross-country skiing or cooking, sewing, bowling. And when I first got here, parents came to me and said, "We hope it's okay with you, but we would like to be able to continue this winter activities program. It's something that's very important here at Dummerston and we want to be able to give the teachers a time to really work on professional development. Is that okay with you?" Yeah, that's fine. That works really well. And it has worked very well. We have, there's a very vibrant Friends of the Library, which is a group of women that have kept our library media center stocked and up to date for years through volunteering and fundraising. Oh, we've got a great sports program. The school sports program begins in sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, it's in middle school sports with soccer, basketball, some baseball and some softball, though I have to say year-round soccer has cut into those spring teams somewhat. But years ago, parents got together and started a pretty vibrant rec league for kids, so kindergarten through sixth grade have rec league, soccer, basketball. Do they have socks? Do they have rec league, baseball? Softball? Okay. So, yeah. It's, you'd be hard trying to find a time when this, somebody's not on the grounds playing sports or in the building playing sports. It's pretty open from seven in the morning until about nine o'clock at night. And occasionally men's leagues will come in and use the gymnasium for things too. So, sports, academics, winter activities, vibrant media events, musical and art events. PTFO. PTFO is, I would say, up and running this year in a way that it has been rather dormant in the past few years. That's great, so.
We also have a great elf program. I think part of this is, you know, the more parents are involved, the better students do academically and they're doing the school. I've had a great time. So, there's a nature program called Elf and you have a curriculum, you go train. Amy did this as well, didn't you? Yes. And you do puppet shows and it gives you a chance to get into the classroom. I loved it. I really loved it. And your, my kids are always like, "Are you coming in to do Elf? Can I help you with your puppets, Mom?" And so it's just, there's so many opportunities to become involved in this school and parents are so welcomed here and there's so much that needs to get done as a school and we try to provide a really wide array of programming. So, whenever, if you ever have any spare bandwidth to become involved, there's a lot of great places depending if your talent is puppeteering or coaching soccer, there's a place for you to help out.
Speaking of Amy, she started our garden program, fresh fruit, vegetable program years ago with our garden out there. And that's been going strong with kindergarten and middle school working together on growing, planting, harvesting. Community support helps to keep it going through the summer. We have a science classroom up in the hills here, I think also on your property. We have, our middle school has club time in the afternoon. They have fitness and science clubs that, you know, spend time outside. Yeah, there's just, give these folks some time to put their heads together and you get just a plentiful, a bunch of activities that come from it. And that's what's happened at our middle school with the 1400 clubs. Our cat time, which is, you know, community action time, upper graders working with lower grade kids, really building community as a working mom.
Hey, Jo Carol.
Yeah.
So, our role as a school board is assuring that all the children in our community have access to an excellent education at a price the taxpayers can afford. And so this is where this meeting really comes together is for us to understand what the needs of the community are in supporting the pre-K education and trying to put our finger in the air to figure out what it's going to cost the taxpayers if we were going to add this additional programming. Because if you open the paper, you realize education in Vermont is expensive and so we would have to be really thoughtful before we would add to the taxpayer burden and it will be a difficult decision no matter what. So, part of our goal here tonight is through the survey and through your input to really hear what it is the school could do to support you. And we also would like to get some idea of potential numbers because of the very complex funding formula for Vermont education. The more students we have, the kind of the better off we are. And so we get to count pre-K as a .46 of a student, which really helps our count. So, if we have one pre-K student who's interested in full-time pre-K, it's probably not, every year is probably not a viable program. And if we have 10, it probably might be a viable program, but we really have to sharpen our pencils and figure that out over the budgeting season which is just upon us. So, we kind of want to hear what the needs are and try to weigh that against what the tax implications might be. So, that's the sad part. Like, I would just, I would just love to open it up tomorrow. Wouldn't that be nice? So, and I think the survey will help us get data. And if you know somebody who can't be here today, I have heard from a couple families that couldn't, I think three different families have emailed me that want the survey, but if you know somebody else that you think might be interested, please take a survey or I feel funny contacting people at home. So, if you know somebody personally, if you could contact them and ask them to fill it out, that would be really helpful for us to collect enough data to see if this is a viable thing going forward. So, is there anybody that has any questions or thoughts about pre-K? Because we really want to hear from y'all.
So, my name's Tammy McNamara. I'm a Dummerston resident. My daughter Grace just started attending the school here as a kindergartner. We couldn't be happier and our family really looks forward to being involved with the school. We also have a two-year-old. And so basically what I'm here to express is a need in the community for pre-K. We're big supporters of public schools. Both of our daughters went to and attend currently private schools for pre-K because quality of care was very important for us. We traveled to Brattleboro. Both my husband and I work full-time. We both work in Dummerston or for companies located in Dummerston, but we send a lot of money. We're looking at probably over $10,000 a year out of the town for care for our children. And we spend a lot of time traveling. We also have a really strong sense of community with the schools that our children have attended. Spend a lot of time volunteering, networking with families in those schools. When you're saying, you know, talk to people that have other small children, I know a lot of people with small children, but I don't know a lot of people with small children in Dummerston because my kids go to a private school with other children that go to a private school that's not part of our local community. So, building that local community connection and expending that energy, I mean, we put on a huge fundraiser at Neighborhood Schoolhouse for Enchanted Halloween, lots of time that we put into that. And I would love to put that time, money, energy back into our local community. So, that's what I wanted to say. I see a lot of positives, you know, in terms of community building and the school. The other thing is I know we're looking to keep up enrollment numbers and attract young families to the town of Dummerston. That's actually a big thing. If I was looking for a house right now, I'd probably, we, when we moved to Dummerston 10 years ago, we didn't have any children. If I was looking to buy a house right now, I would be looking for quality childcare in that town. You know, we live on the Putney line. Sometimes I wish I could jump over that line so my kids could go to pre-K. Because that's a big, for people in my demographic with small children, that's a big drawing point, you know, for a town. And if we're looking to maintain, you know, enrollment numbers and attract young families, I think it would be a selling point for the town.
I would second that. My child is at Saxon River for Saxon River Montessori because we can't afford the Riddler Montessori, so we go to Saxon River Montessori. We can only afford three full days a week, but it's better than nothing. But wanting our child to have that, to give him that head start to come in ready to learn and wanting to learn and to put in, instill in him being a lifelong learner at a young age. And for us without, with him, he's an anxious little boy and it took us a lot to get him settled there. And now we have to pull him in June to then start all over again. So, to be able to start that community building here is huge. And the same thing, we have, he's all of these friends that he's going to say goodbye to and have to start all over again.
Well, I can see something. So, we have a son who just started kindergarten here, but we also have a three-year-old who currently attends Westby Nursery School. And it is very, it's a great school, however, it is very expensive. He goes there five days a week right now. And because I am in college, we kind of get a discount through everything. Unfortunately, my college comes to an end pretty soon, so that price is going to skyrocket. And with my husband and I, we just, it's just so costly that we're nervous on what is going to happen. And we want him to have the best education that he can have. We bought our house three years ago in Dummerston. We heard really great things about Dummerston Elementary and we are completely pleased with how things are going for our oldest and everything. So, having a pre-K here in Dummerston is like, if we can do that, that would be fantastic. I mean, it would just, just be so great to have everybody together.
I guess, I'm just curious, like, so are there different ideas going around or is it just for like full-time pre-K? I mean, are there different options or is that what it's geared, we're looking at?
That's what we're looking at and hoping to sort of figure out from the survey. I think it's a very amorphous law at this point. And I think we're looking at a full-time school year, school day, pre-K conceptually. And then if there were, you know, 10 people that said we need after-care hours or things like that, I mean, I think it's going to have to sort of be a back and forth and, you know, discussion about what's doable. And so that's why we're hoping to get actual numbers off the survey.
Sure. I just was kind of curious what the main agenda was. Do you know what I mean, the main?
For us to hear like what the need, the goal is to figure out what the need, yes.
Would be to bring in full-time Monday through Friday, pre-K. Okay.
Yes.
And are there, like, I know we keep talking about a lot about younger families that maybe don't already have children in the school that nobody knows. Is there anything going on in the community right now? Like, does the library do a story hour or anything like that?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
It's Thursday mornings, or it used to be.
Okay. So then, but for like parents that work full-time and things like that, then they may not be able to attend something like that?
Right. And I would love to hear ideas about ways that we could involve that zero-to-five demographic of children and their families, keeping in mind that people have to work to
Right.
pay for those zero-to-five children.
Yeah.
How we could, how we could find creative ways to do that as a community. Because I think it was a really big help for my family to have that transition and so, and it's kind of fallen by the wayside. It was relying on volunteers and so what could we as a community try to do in some way to continue that? I remember Amy did, brought her worms. She did worm composting with my son. So, I mean, you're drawing on those community, those volunteer opportunities to try to create, to try and create this in the near term, even before the pre-K years for even the two- and three-year-olds.
I have a question. I don't know if this is the right place or form, but I'll ask. If you can't meet your, your numbers, is there any way to do something like a school choice for pre-K for other neighboring towns that don't, that don't have it? To, to get your numbers up in to generate some revenue? I don't know.
That's an interesting question that I'll have to think about unless I'm a less, you know, something like you.
Now, Putney, when they started, may have, but now they're full of their own students.
There are some Dummerston residents that are going to Putney because they take them if there's room.
If there's room.
There is a family that I know of that's going to Putney right now.
So, it sounds like it is definitely possible.
It's possible.
I think, I mean, with, honestly, I mean, what we built in Dummerston, we'd have to put up with some neighbors to, to live where we live. It's my dad. It's my dad. To live where we live.
Family land, family land.
For the school. So, I think you would get the need met from surrounding towns if numbers was ever an issue for that pre-K.
I was reading, my name's Lauren Ballack, the son in first grade, Colin, who's six of course, and Leah, who just turned three. But for me, one thing that would be important is to include three and four-year-olds because it'd be hard to start a child maybe who's never been in a school setting in one preschool and then having to transition them when they're four to this setting. I mean, I think it's important and also increase the numbers. But also I was reading some of the notes and it said something about how three-year-olds are so different than four-year-olds and potty training and whatnot. And when my son went to preschool at St. Michael's, you know, they, students couldn't attend unless they were potty trained. That was one of the requirements to attend preschool. That's a private school, of course, but I don't know how, if that works with public school, but that was something that we had to know, we had to work on before he could go. And of course made him change his mind about potty training as well. So, anyway, I feel like there are some things that are workable with brainstorming and whatnot.
I can reiterate that there's nothing I would love more than to know, to know that the incoming kindergarteners walking through my door on September 1st or August 29th have been in a Dummerston-run pre-K program. That is incredibly exciting to me as a teacher. I also know that there is a need as a parent. And I guess, looking forward, I don't, I am not an expert in how the budget works and how choices are made and what timelines are for that whole piece. But I do know that it always seems like the budget is tight and it always seems like it's a balancing act, like you said, between, you know, providing the highest quality education that we can for the students in our town while also not being, putting a burden on the taxpayers. And I guess, you know, one concern I have, or one, one question I would have is would we be able to design and implement a pre-K program simply by adding money to the budget while not taking away from the resources that we current, that we use for current students K to eight? Because I think that what we, the resources that we're able to provide to our current students and teachers who are running the classrooms and physical materials, everything, I think, I think we do a really great job of that. And, you know, I'd like to see money added to the budget for a pre-K but not taking away from the wonderful programs that we do have currently in place.
Of course, Amy.
The thing about adding to the budget is Dummerston typically, in the 14 years I've been doing this, is typically within the top 10 spending per equalized student. What we have to be cognizant of is the very complicated funding formula. When we get over that, the state cap, we get charged, we have to pay an extra dollar for dollar, for every dollar over. So, that's the burden that, you know, we as a board have really, I mean, there are years where we have definitely gone over the cap and, you know, the town has graciously gone ahead and approved the budget as is, knowing that, you know, that we were incurring penalties. So, it really, you know, it's a town-based decision. And I, but I think the school board would have to justify, you know, at least a portion of the financial expenditures based on the ADM, the average daily membership, the .46 that Christina, that boosts our equalized pupil number by .46 per preschool-aged child. It's only four-year-olds that go towards that. So, if we're able to boost that equalized pupil number and keep our spending relatively the same, it's going to reduce our equalized pupil spending dollars. So, it definitely is a balancing act of
It's a very difficult
Yeah. And then if anybody wants to learn more about the education funding formula, there is a new video that the VS, Vermont School Board Association, put out about explaining it. I haven't watched it yet, but I figured I'd save it for some late night view.
So, for, so each student between K and eight, or probably K to 12, they're counted as one student?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
That would be too easy.
Did you watch that video? Yes. Yeah, the hard thing to comprehend is that it's not actual two children sitting at a desk, you know, or in a chair. It's weighted. So, if you have a child with special needs, that child is weighted in terms of equalized pupil count a little heavier.
Right.
You know, so. And poor little preschool-aged children get to be a .46.
They're smaller, I guess.
They're shooter, but they're
Is it really just four-year-olds that can be counted to this ADM?
Yes.
No.
Three and four for 10 hours for 35, or for the school year essentially. So, there's a limit to that.
Well, we can provide as much, but if that .45 is theoretically 10 hours of pre-K.
Yes. You can, yeah, the town can choose to provide a full, yeah.
I wouldn't recommend the 80 hours of pre-K. So, Tammy?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the demand and, you know, wondering if we have the numbers. And like I said, I have a five and a two-year-old and we were on numerous waitlists from the time those children were a year old, both of them, on numerous waitlists to find quality pre-K care for them in this area. We were on lists in Putney. We looked into the Putney pre-K program to see about, they didn't have any room. The Putney pre-K was full. We happened to get into Proudy because they needed to balance their, their boy-girl ratio. So, we got real lucky in that respect. But, I mean, but truly, I mean, there's waitlists and I know people, you know, personally, I know lots of people who have, you know, struggled and been on waitlists and not been able to find care and even, you know, gave up working for a couple of years because they couldn't find quality childcare. So, I don't know the town all that well, but I know the area, the demand is there for quality pre-K. And I also know that in terms of like children doing well academically, that putting that money towards quality pre-K is one of the best things we can do as parents and as a community to have kids that are lifelong learners.
Yeah, it adds to the funding formula difficulty in that research says that that's money well-spent and it reduces interventions. You may need to do a special education by earlier intervention and, and behavior interventions by earlier. So, add to our complex funding formula what we think we may be saving in terms of children's futures, honestly, but then when you look at the dollars and cents about what that costs to intervene later, you know, it takes a bit to identify, pre-K is a cost-effective program overall when you look at spending money on educating. So, there's a lot to be said for that. I don't even know how to do that calculation because I can do the ADM calculation if I have, but I think it's, I think it's a really important point to bring up as we discuss, you know, how, what the, what the real cost is.
Right. Well, my, my two-year-old right now, she is being referred for speech at two. I mean, she's almost three. She'll be three soon, but she's being referred for speech and that's something that at this stage, if I was a stay-at-home mom, I wouldn't have picked up that she needed that help at all, you know, I, I wouldn't have known. And there's places where she, that might not be picked up. And so hopefully intervening now, y'all won't have to deal with her speech problems when she comes here. But if you do, she'll have a good, you know, a good head start on that. And that, that's the kind of stuff that you can't really put into a formula, but you're recognizing.
But it should fill, it should fit into our thought process.
Absolutely.
It's really important to do the best we can for our kids, you know, even if there were dollars attached to it that they can come, they can arrive at Jill's door just a little bit ahead and ready to go.
I just want to say that over the many years that I've lived in town, I don't think anybody's, the town has ever voted down our budget. And I think that if you decide to do this kind of thing and you have your, your ducks in order, your finances and everything, and you have Tammy up there telling why we need to have this.
I'm a shower rubber.
She's a shower rubber. And she speaks well and other people showing up at town meeting and speaking. The people of Dummerston will understand that, even if they have to pay a little bit more, the value of that. So, that's just my history since 1970 here, so.
I think too, you know, our society is changing. I think us here, you know, we have to do our due diligence. We're the ones that, that are seeing the need and, and we need to speak to on behalf of the families that aren't here and may not, may not know they should be here and that are struggling at home. And that's who we can also affect. I mean, we're going to find quality education for our children no matter what and make the sacrifices no matter what. But we have families here in Dummerston that, that need us to do it for them, which then in turn does it then in turn does it for our community.
Well said, thank you. Any other, and I, and I do, I don't, you don't, do we have any pre-K providers here?
Yes, we do. Can I just introduce Lisa Bauer?
Yes.
She's a literacy teacher here. Um, she's a pre-K teacher from, what school was it that I dragged you away from and made you come here? In case you didn't, you could do this job and now they were older.
I was in Brookline.
Brookline, running a pre-K.
And also taught kindergarten. And I had a home daycare for a few years because I couldn't find care for my first child, you know, out here.
So she's been, um, sort of my go-to person about pre-K as, as Janice Stockman, who was sort of our district, um, go-to person in terms of pre-K, even though I'm not sure that is the job description particularly, but it's ended up...
And Chad Simmons? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Um, my name is Chad Simmons. I'm the Regional Council Coordinator for Building Bright Futures. We're the early childhood council for both the region and the state. So we advise kind of local organizations on early childhood policy as well as state government. Um, so I'm interested in seeing how this conversation, uh, goes and offer myself and Janice, um, uh, has a plethora of information as you move forward in the decision, um, what that might look like. There is actually some research on what the number is. The, uh, Vermont Businesses for Social Responsibility and Vermont, uh, Business Roundtable have done a lot of research on the actual impact of, uh, investing in pre-kindergarten and pre-K. Um, and there's a lot of great resources available, um, uh, that we can point you to in terms of if you get to that point on what developing a high-quality pre-K program at your school might look like. Um, so folks at Guilford, obviously Putney, um, uh, and a number of others within Wyndham County have already, uh, developed a pre-K program within the school and are doing a lot of really amazing things with, with kids. And you all have spoken very eloquently about the reasons why that's important.
I have a question. Um, I don't know if you may move a while. I was just wondering, I know that, um, Oak Grove and Guilford started their pre-K programs this year.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, when conversations started bubbling about starting those? Um, like how far?
Like how far out?
How far out? Like, right, like when did that process start for particularly Guilford because they're an outlying school as well?
Guilford started the fall before, so a year ago.
So a year.
September, October. Um, Oak Grove a little bit longer, but that was because we were work, we were merging with Head Start, so it was a little bit of a different process. But Oak Grove would be a closer, um, a close mirroring...
And Guilford.
I'm sorry, Guilford.
Okay.
Would mirror this program.
But I think Guilford's school board talked about preschool for at least...
For years.
Five years.
Yeah.
And maybe more than that. Um, I think they, they've been discussing it, you know, and going through many evolutions in different school boards before taking the plunge.
Finally taking the step, having a meeting like this, actually. And that's when a lot of people came out and they finally, it was like, oh, there really is a need for this here. And so they really pushed ahead when they saw the need.
I think it's important to know that this is a critical piece in the, in a process that's required by the state of Vermont for a school to start a preschool, a new preschool. You actually have to submit an application saying that you've done a needs assessment, that you have some idea of, um, how many people in, or how many children in your community need, um, a preschool setting. Um, you have to submit some data on the, uh, the number of available childcare openings that there are in the, in the, um, general community. And you, you would have to be approved by the Agency of Education and the, um, Agency of Human Services before you can start. So Guilford and Oak Grove went through that application process and they were approved last year. Um, but it's not something to just skip over.
Any other questions or thoughts or...
Yeah, I was just saying with us, we have a subsidy that helps us pay for our child's pre-K. Um, and I was just wondering if that was funding that you could theoretically use to help? No, I'm seeing the head shake already. And is that basically mixed in with the four-point, or point four-six? So they would give a kid a higher rating based on that?
The subsidy comes through the state and that's a totally different program.
Okay.
It's also, you only can get the subsidy if you charge tuition.
Okay.
So if Dummerston were to charge tuition, then you could, uh, collect subsidy money.
You could mention like ten as a number. Oh, I was just saying like ten is a different story than one. I'm not saying ten. I'm not saying I had, you know, I, I, because I, that would be a lot of numbers to run as we've talked about how complex this issue is. And so before I start running, before we all start running every number to try to figure out, you know, what happened in Guilford, what happened in Putney, what is it costing them, how is it gonna affect our tax base? Um, was there even a need? Because I could do math problems all night, but there's been plenty of those as being a school board member. So I think just to assess the need and hear kind of what the need is and get the surveys back and, and understand what the need is and then sit down as a board and say, okay, this is the, this is the one scenario we're really looking at here. This is the way forward. But if there's only one kid that needs pre-K, I can tell you that's not gonna happen, you know? I can do that math in my head. So just in terms of thinking about it, what, what the, what the need is and upcoming, what the need is, you know, if it's a, if it's a one-year need, it's gonna be very hard to go through this whole process, as Janice has eloquently reminded me of and does it every meeting. Um, it's not something to skip over. It's a one-year need. That is probably not something we should consider because there's a lot of startup costs and just how the funding formula lags with the ADM. It would be a lot to ask the taxpayers to take on that for one year. It would, it would almost make no sense. So it, I hope, you know, Jody Norman Doe, thank you, has done a great job finding everybody zero to five in this town pretty much, from birth records at the town office to, you know, it seems like we actually have a birth rate in Dummerston and people moving to town. And so to understand the, the five-year need for this too is really helpful. So, Janice, you have it?
I just wanted to also say that one of the wonderful things about what Wyndham Southeast does to support preschoolers is that, um, in the towns that have preschool in the public school, they also allow residents to use that reimbursement in, in community-based programs. So in Putney, the, there's a preschool in the school, but if a Putney resident wants or needs, uh, preschool that's year-round or a longer day, or they have a one-year-old and a four-year-old and it's just easier for the family to enroll in a center that serves all that age range, that, um, they can use the funding to send their child to a, a community-based sent, setting. So I would, um, hope that Dummerston thinks about that as well so that families, that you don't put all of your investment into, um, a single-type program. So families have a choice.
The other thing is a lot, like, you were required to do that, but maybe not. Maybe I just made that up in my head.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Isn't that state funds though? And it's not our funds that pay for that?
Not for full-time.
Oh, for full-time.
So the state funds are only, so when we talk about what the state funding comes into, it only pays for ten hours a week.
Yeah.
So if Dummerston were to provide full-day, uh, pre-K, um, this, you would need to make up that, so, uh, for, if you were to provide funding for another program. So Putney probably uses its, its, uh, tax base to pay that extra amount to go to another program. And I do know Putney, you know, folks from Guilford went to visit with Putney and met with the, the principals and, and had those conversations and Janice was really helpful. So I, again, I think there, you have a lot of resources in Wyndham County to ask those kinds of questions. And I know Guilford and Oak Grove are, obviously they're, within the first year, that they'll be able to give you an honest assessment, I imagine.
We've already been reaching out to hear about their experiences and Janice has brought stories from the first year of Guilford and so we hope to learn from other people's experiences and maybe not repeat mistakes that people made along the way. So plagiarism is always welcome here.
We're gonna make new mistakes.
Yeah.
So what do you, what does the school board need from us then? What do you need from us to help move this along or do, whatever it is? How can we walk beside you in this?
I love that question. Um, getting as many surveys completed as possible. And then if you're interested in volunteering on the sign-up sheet, we ask for that because it would be great if we could, if we're gonna go forward to this, to create a task force. I mean, this is, it's unlikely I'm gonna have another child and start this all over again and attend the pre-K. So I would think it would be more the vision of that community that would be looking to help create that. And I mean, the school board is the authority that is getting a lot of the work done and, and the tax base, but in terms of the actual work, we'll find, we'll find ways to put volunteer hours to use here. And I know, one thing I know about Dummerston is there's a lot, we have a deep bench of talent in this town. So, um, if you have a specific, if you're a grant writer, you know, I was finding grants this weekend to help start off our first year potentially. So if you have that skill, if you, you know, are a builder and, you know, can help construct pre-K stuff, you know, when they, when it comes in in the boxes, because we would need different kinds of, um, equipment for the, for preschoolers than what we have, than our lovely stuff here that's suitable for older ages and thinking about things like that. There's so many opportunities to become involved early on, it would be really helpful. So if you have an interest in volunteering to, or if you know, have a neighbor that has an interest in volunteering, vo- volunteer them if they're not here tonight. Any other thoughts about, uh, prison?
Oh, I'm sorry. Asher, do we have room to accommodate a pre-K program here?
Yes.
Okay. We need to find the room.
We're not sure where, but, um...
Um, and then my other question is, I mean, how is the student population right now? Because I know sort of that was sort of a big topic with the whole Act forty-six merger thing was like student populations decreasing and, and things like that. Like where do we see Dummerston currently?
Thank you all for having children. And if Dummerston has, is not immune to the decline in population, I think when you look kind of the long-term, we have not declined as much as the state of Vermont. Um, if you just look at our birth rate, it doesn't look so good, but I think is what I've, as I've heard tonight, a lot of people have moved here for the community and the schools. So I think that you can't really look at the birth rate in Dummerston and say that's how many students are incoming. As all schools in the area, we have years ago, like, you know, that, you know, we have sixteen in kindergarten this year. That's a great-sized kindergarten to me. I think that's a perfect, yeah, perfect size. Um, and, you know, but then we have years where there's nine. And so it's, it's a challenge and it's a challenge for the school staff to kind of figure out how to be flexible with our staffing. It requires us to be a lot more nimble in organization, I think. By we, I mean them. To be a much more nimble organization to figure how we can move staff around to meet the needs of the large classrooms and, you know, classrooms come in with different needs at a student level.
Um, just, I have a question and this is probably a question for later down the road, a what-if question that could go down and add a poll. However, I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, just thinking about those bubble classes and the ups and downs, um, you know, if, if there were for four years in a row, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, twelve, whatever, preschool students who needed a preschool program, perhaps that's a sustainable number. If we hit a bubble and we have twenty-eight preschoolers who are seeking public, uh, public preschool experience, um, would every child be guaranteed a spot in that preschool or would we have to turn taxpayers' children away? And I don't know what the responsibility is of a public school if it's a public pre-K program. Are we required to take in every child or, um, in arrange staffing accordingly? Or do we put on a waiting list? And can we sit with that in our conscience, conscience, knowing that there are children out there on a waiting list to get into a public pre-K? And, right, that's what we hope, where we hope that our numbers go up. Um, but how do we, how would we confront that if it were an issue? And I don't, I don't necessarily foresee that being an issue now, but it could be down the road and I think it's something to have on the back burner.
Yeah.
How we would accommodate that.
I don't know. I'm kind of curious what Oak Grove did, or Putney, when they first started?
I think that some of them, um, well, not only, I, I don't know that anybody, any of our locals have encountered that problem, but in other parts of the state, they would have a lottery. They would say, you know, our maximum is sixteen and, you know, we, like, pick the names out of a hat. The other way to think of your question though, is if there really were twenty-eight preschoolers and Dummerston had a preschool, you know, that was two or three or four years old, what would you do with those twenty-eight kindergartners? Like, you would probably...
That's what we had to deal with.
Have kindergarten classes. So once you have pre-K in your building, you make a commitment to pre-K.
Right.
Right? I think the harder question would be, what if there were nineteen or twenty?
And right, sitting right on that cusp.
Yeah. Because really, when you go over sixteen or seventeen in a preschool classroom, you, you know...
Yeah.
Chaos.
Yeah. You need more, you know, you need more teachers, it's a bigger investment.
Is it possible to offer part-time slots in that? In that, if, say you had nineteen, is it possible to offer? Because some people are happy with a three-day slot and a two-day slot for, especially, you know, if, say it were three-year-olds too, and so is it possible instead of a lottery to offer?
Well, that would be a, a programmatic decision.
So it's not, there's nothing preventing us.
As long as it's ten hours or more a week. That would be a decision, you know, that you would make.
Can I just, uh, answer you?
Of course.
Um, clearly our numbers are down since I started here. Um, but since the beginning, the K eight has never distributed equally. It's never been...
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
We've always had big classes and small classes and kids that wouldn't roll would enroll into the big classes. The small classes would stay the same. Um, we have, we have handled classes of thirty-three.
Yeah.
And not in the so distant past, kindergartens of twenty-seven and twenty-eight. What has stayed pretty much the same is our, uh, student-to-teacher ratio. Um, it was at eighteen when our numbers were up. It's at sixteen now. You just take the number of classroom teachers and multiply the kids that are here. So, I mean, we've done all sorts of different types of things with, uh, when kindergarten is large, it's tough to say to them, okay, half the class gets this kindergarten and the other half gets, um, all of this room here that we have. So we've, you know, managed it by using our, our academic support teachers and, you know, having two teachers in there. I mean, we, there are ways of dealing with the big number of classes that...
No, I guess my thing is, is there a way for us to tell if there is enough to sustain the program? You know? And how do we, how do we reach out? Because I've heard from a few people here today that they didn't have ties to the community and didn't know about, you know, like Teddy Bear T and things like that. So how do we find the people?
We hired Jody Norman Doe. To door-to-door, to door-to-door. I mean, that's one thing, that's, that's my takeaway from this meeting, that there's, needs to be a way for the school to connect with every newborn family member. They need to know what's going on here and, you know...
A, a welcome new baby would be wonderful.
Or welcome to new, to Dummerston. So we're here to do that, but I know that there are people that are...
You know, because I mean, I, I see this as not just like, oh, we're gonna start the program and...
Right.
You know what I mean? It's, you kind of have to look at the big picture, right? Like the long term, we have to make sure we constantly have enough, correct? Kids to sustain the program.
Yeah, I think we have to, you know, we have, I mean, you can only look five years back.
Yeah, no, sure, yeah.
Unless we're putting something in the water, but that's really the limit of what we can look. But I think, but I also think it's possibly something that is, the more attractive we make Dummerston for families. I mean, I actually spoke to somebody who said, wow, if I had really good pre-K in Dummerston, I could have a second kid. I mean, that is kind of the decisions that people are making. So, you know, that's, not only is that an effect to me of what, how difficult pre-K is for people that they're making family decisions about it, that's another point six, four, six button in the seat when I have my financial hat on. So I think, I think we need to be thinking about what we are doing as a community to be welcoming to families. Like, I think that if we can do more to reach down into that zero to four population and, and create community there, I think that's, I'm not sure how to do that sitting here right now, because it's sort of a, something that we talked about in the last two days, Joe Carroll and I, Joe Carroll knows what to do.
Well, definitely, but I also think it's important to remember too that when, when students start here in kindergarten, they usually graduate from right here. That I think when we get a handle on the numbers, we can depend on those numbers to sort of stay pretty constant throughout their career here. We don't have a large transient population, which, you know, is great. I should get the information.
I just had a number idea because of what you were just saying about when, when the students come, they stay, right?
Yeah.
Would there be any value to doing like a retrospective survey and asking kindergarten families, where did your kids go for care last year? And if it was an option here, would you have chosen it?
It's a great idea.
I don't know if that would be, I mean, you have a captive population and you don't have to track people down. You could just ask them, where did your kids go? Would you have used it if it was here? And I don't know if, like, how many classes you include in that, but you could get some retrospective information, that might be helpful.
That's a really good idea.
Mr. Normandow is ahead of me.
Mr. Normandow's ahead of me, okay.
My father's Mr. Normandow, I'm Dan. Just to build on what the last three people have said, and maybe it's obvious, but I'll state it anyways, it's also a way to increase the number of students we have in K through eight, because we do lose people that start at a preschool and they don't end up coming here. So that, so there's, there's a lot of benefit, I see, so I just wanted to state that, that's an additive benefit.
Well, I'm just thinking of two ways that you could know about people who move into town, because we know about the birds. And one of them, we might be able to check on, with Lori at the town office and, and check with new families and maybe a welcome new family and find out about that. And I don't know whether Dummerston Cares is doing something like that.
I think they have just started, I donated jam to this, that's why I know, so there is a new welcome basket, so maybe we could put something as a school into that basket.
Yeah, and, and ask them to check when they, when they talk to the people, do you have any kids? Now, if they're looking at my color hair, they're, it's obvious, you know, I'm not having any kids, but the other thing is, I think, through the Realtors Association, find out what Realtors are selling and whether there's kids involved.
So if you know some Realtors, maybe they could.
Maybe we could check.
Her son is a Realtor.
Well, the other Mr. Normandow was in real estate for forty, thirty-five years, so you know, you can do that and.
But I like the idea of a welcome basket that's already going out to people and they have reinvigorated that recently, so that might be a really good place.
Just put it with your jam.
I'll print it on the jam link.
The views of Dummerston would be a good, having it as well, because that reaches every household in the community.
It's a great idea.
As well as the front porch forum.
I must say, when I had young kids, I couldn't quite get through the.
If you have something that says preschool.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I'm, I'm kind of thinking about a couple of different ways in which there can be more connections being made between, you know, for families with, with children zero to five. And so, your name again?
Tammy.
Tammy, Tammy was just mentioning that there is a welcome baby program run by Early Education Services, our parent-child center, and there are also the Head Start, Early Head Start and Head Start program. So Sandy Stark coordinates that program, but Sandy Stark is also the Parent-Child Center Coordinator, and she would be more than happy to maybe come up with some ideas and how folks, families in Dummerston could organize play groups and other ways to, to connect as families. Wyndham Northeast also has a family engagement, so the entire SU has a family engagement coordinator. I believe they use Title I funding to fund that. I know that idea has been shared around, I think that person focuses mainly on middle and high school, but there has been conversations on looking at more younger children to engage their families. So just, I think there's, there's some ideas on, on how to get folks more connected to the school prior to coming to the school.
I think one thing that the Pugilists, that's nice, is they have the soccer for four-year-olds and T-ball. So the families are getting together at four and they're just interleague playing each other, but that's a way the incoming kindergarteners, they just know each other. The second thing is, we talked a lot about like the need for, for us adults for quality childcare, you know, like what, what we need. But I want to know from the school, have you seen a decline in basic skills socially, academically, fine and gross motor skills coming in? And would, are we seeing that this is a need that we need for our children so that they are ready for kindergarten?
I can't speak to the historical patterns because this is just my second year here, but, but what I can speak to is that it is typically pretty clear to me, without looking at a student file, which children come into the classroom having a pre-K experience. It's pretty clear, if not academically, socially, without a doubt. You know, in pre-K, they learn how to follow a group plan, they learn how to have a routine, they learn how to trust adults that are people who are not their parents. They learn a ton of social skills that if they're staying home, they're not learning. And I have an only child who did not go to preschool and I know how important it is. And, and she struggled socially in kindergarten because she didn't have that exposure. And I think that, you know, I think if a child doesn't have, have pre-K, as long as their parents are at home doing counting activities, reading books, using scissors, letting them play with glue, they will come to the classroom with the skills that they need. They come to kindergarten to learn their ABCs, that's what kindergarten's about. However, for many of the kids who need pre-K most, they're likely not getting those skills and they're not getting that practice at home with their parents. And, and so it is pretty clear to me which kids have had some school experience before coming to kindergarten, and it makes the transition significantly easier.
One way of getting that kind of a ballpark of your, you know, your critical mass of population is to look back over the years and think about how many of those kindergarteners didn't have preschool. Maybe you can come up with a five-year average or something. Because I think we do know how many kids went through the public pre-K, who received public pre-K funding to go to places like Neighborhood Schoolhouse and the Winston-Poway Center. And I have that information at least three, four years back. And I know that there are nine three-year-olds right now who are Dummerston residents and who get the pre-K funding to go to some of those other places. Next year, they'll be four. And that doesn't count the ones who aren't in any kind of pre-K because they can't afford it, don't have access, are homeless, you know, so that would be a way of coming up with an estimate.
I like the idea of looking, maybe taking.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Because we do have information on where kids have gone to preschool and a simple question to parents, if a public pre-K was offered.
And especially the kids who didn't go to any program at all.
Right.
If a public pre-K was offered with their parents that they have chosen that option.
I will also just say, back to sort of what Jill was just talking about, I'm the lower grade special ed teacher here, so I work with grades K to five primarily, and I work very closely with Janice because she has a lot of information about kids coming in, any child that receives services prior to coming to Dummerston School. You know, we have meetings in the spring before the kid even comes here and I have a ton of information coming to me about, you know, who I'm going to be working with in the fall. And if a child, you know, there are opportunities for kids who aren't part of a preschool program, but a lot of times those kids don't get caught. And the reality is, you know, we, we work as quickly as we can, but if a child comes in that hasn't gone to a pre-K program, you know, we might be making a referral in the fall, but the time to do assessments and testing and really kind of get the ball rolling as far as special ed is concerned, you know, they're, they're really not getting the services as quickly as they would if I'm working with Janice or if we had the kids here in the building. So that's just one other, it's a small part of our population, but certainly, you know, I walk in knowing a lot about the kids who are coming from programs that are working with Janice. And we don't have that information for kids that aren't in a preschool program or aren't receiving services for that, so that's another piece.
I just, my last comment on this tonight would be that I want to thank the board for finally, after a number of years, to really put in the effort to make this happen or to at least investigate this happening, and I would encourage you to, to, to make it happen, even if it's marginal. What I've just heard, the last few comments are, there's a lot of benefits for doing it, not just the bottom line. And, and I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. Obviously, if there's only one or two kids, that's a tough one, but if there's five or six, I would, and I'm just making these numbers up, I encourage, I encourage you to do it. I think there'll be long-term benefits that'll come from it.
Could you even start this again, sorry? Well, could you start it, there is only two or three.
If it's benefiting our children in our school to up the subsidy or whatever, to send those two or three to quality pre-K programs, even if it's outside of our town. I'm just, you know, if that's what it comes to ever. If it's two or three, are they worth it? Is it worth it to give them that hedge, that step up?
I'd have, you know.
Yeah, no, just throwing it out there, hypothetic, something to think about. I don't need an answer.
Well, I guess I want to throw the ball back a little bit in terms of, of helping spread the word of this to parents who couldn't make it here tonight, parents who might have younger children that aren't quite thinking about a pre-K yet and just, and trying to create community in that way, because I'm not real, I don't think any of us are really, really connected to that age group all that much, and so if there's some way that you have ideas to do it. Oh, so Emily, Emily, yes, Emily still hasn't put in that, in that. Emily, you just volunteered and you didn't even know.
That's right.
But if we can find a way to create that community, that it might be a really great, it's, I can tell it would be a good thing for Dummerston no matter what, to try to reach more families and try to create those connections.
I think it would be important to really look into a, a flow where Dummerston could attend other schools, people from other schools could attend. That works out on so many levels. I think it's not, it's an issue K through eight. The school population should be fluid. The accounting of funds, that's, that's easy.
I'm going to want him to work.
No, what I'm saying is the funding can be fluid.
Well, yes, we're, that's beating my head against the wall on that as we speak, trying to see how we could make that happen, because I think the vast majority of everybody in our SU agrees with you on, on that point. So how can, how can collaborative minds get that happen? So, I mean, and even on a pre-K level, but that's part of our larger conversation about what we could do to make better opportunities for all the kids in the SU. I think there's not a person at this table that isn't, in this room, that isn't interested in doing that. We're here. Any other final, we still have a school board meeting to go to to, to start, which you're all welcome to stay and attend, but if you have any, on the SU website are all of our email addresses, so you can contact us. I would urge you to sign up on the sheet and we'll try to get a conversation going via email and, and get people involved to try to be some boots on the ground to get the work done. And if you have any follow-up questions, you can contact me first. Or Emily. Can you take a brochure when you go, please? Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Did they all get a, a signed fill-out?
And if you know anybody who could do a survey, they can come tonight. Grab one, take one, yep. So if you can't hear the meeting, you're gonna, okay, you're gonna be the whole sound pack.
I know, she's used to that.
Watch what they say, yes, exactly. Thank you, Tammy.
She's used to that.
Keep it pre-K, yes. Pre-K, keep going. So I would, moving back on to the regular agenda, motion to approve the minutes October twenty-fourth and thirtieth.
I move.
Second? Second. Thank you, Sue. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of October twenty-fourth and October thirtieth, please say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Major extensions? The ayes have.
Present pages need signatures.
And any communications? I've had a billion on the pre-K, people contacting me about this, but, and there's three families that could not make it tonight, whose names are escaping me off the top of my head. Any other communications? Excellent, I'm moving right along. Motion to approve the warrants, what is the, I haven't seen those, I have the amount. Is it today's date on the warrants?
It's eleven fourteen twenty seventeen.
And the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars and twenty-two cents.
Correct.
I move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Major extensions?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget development, are we?
So, Dummerston, Dummerston, twelve, twelve is the draft. Will we do for you? We are hoping to get the preliminary funding law assumptions twelve fifteen and then a more final plan on January ninth. And then a budget approval on January thirtieth.
And any questions? We get, and will we get anything before, it's really lovely if we can get something beforehand, like a day beforehand, just.
Yeah, so that you have it ahead of time.
Yeah, I just feel like it goes much, especially where we have some people, this might be their first time at the rodeo, that they can have a chance to gather questions together and.
Yep, so that would be sometime before twelve twelve.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Maybe Lyle, are you? I mean, you're saying that we get, or they get the thing on twelve twelve. What kind of input goes into it from Joe Carroll?
Joe Carroll and I will meet with Frank, put together, and if there's any direction from you, then we should take that, but what my direction to all the administrators has been put together, a budget that you feel you need to run the school the way you want it run. And then we'll bring that to you and if you say, whoa, no way, then we go back to the drawing board.
So, and Joe Carroll, I assume talks to the teachers and they get input that way through Joe Carroll, et cetera? Okay, thank you, Lyle.
I guess I'm gonna say that if anybody. I guess I'm going to say that if anybody, if anybody wants to meet with me prior to the budget meeting, just to kind of get a walkthrough of the process to make that meeting go faster that day, so you can be more effective, be more than happy to, you can't do it as a quorum, so we'll have to do it one-on-one, but I'd be happy to.
Well, we could do it as a work session.
We could do that, yes.
That would be, be the most appropriate thing.
That's a good, that's a good way to do it. Which would be Thanksgiving Day week or something. So we'll put that on the agenda to try to schedule that in, I guess. I had also, any other questions, thoughts on that? I don't think you have a question, Michael.
Well, it's kind of budget development related. I can't go to the WSESU finance committee meeting, which is talking about budgets tomorrow night, so I just wanted to put that out there to the board and maybe we would vote someone else to go tomorrow night, if you want to go see the Frank presentation of what's going on in the budget.
Yeah, and actually, the actual budget, because it's also back-to-back with the Prudential Town Board meeting, so I've asked Frank to move the budget stuff early. So if you could just go for the budget stuff and then leave, so that the rest.
I won't be able to.
Yeah, I get that, but if somebody else, I'm just saying that, you know.
So what would be the timeframe on the budget stuff?
5:15.
6:15, probably, right?
Yeah. But hopefully it'll, the budget stuff will actually happen at 5:15.
Yeah, high school would bring to a concert at 6:00.
And that's the other issue tomorrow, if there's a concert.
Anybody interested in attending a budget meeting tomorrow?
Well, I can go. Nobody else, can you?
Thank you for, Amy, for offering to do that.
Great.
Where are the, that's in gold, second. And another thing that I had asked Joe Carroll about is to do a review of our staff ratios.
So can I just ask, when you ask for staff ratios, because at this point there are a few different ways that they are working.
Oh, yes.
And we still don't have a clear message from the state. So when you say staff, are you thinking?
All of the above.
Students, students to certified staff, or sometimes they figure it's students with custodians?
Right, all adults.
Cooks, all adults in the building, which of course is a very different ratio. So I was just wondering.
Yeah, I was, I was interested in if this, if the SU was combining, collecting that information for the state, it would be very helpful for us to understand what our numbers are here. Because we have to budget and defend them and understand them, and so, you know, they're looking for all those numbers, so those are the numbers, but that's why it comes to staff.
Joe Carroll typically provides us with a worksheet every year that shows how can break down the budget years past, yeah.
But the state has changed, I think, how they're collecting some of that data, or asking for more data. And so I thought it'd be helpful for us to understand. Like, they want to know the total number of adults in the building, basically, to children, which I don't think they've.
Needed before? Yeah. And, and in my mind, it's not, it's not a valid, I mean, we're not talking about the custodian teaching the kids.
Right.
The cooks aren't teaching the kids, so it's, it can be very misleading if we're thinking about it in that way.
Please say that, all three.
Yeah, and I would just like to see both. Right. Like that, that. Use the one I want.
I think, yeah, I think we have to educate ourselves as to what, you know, we're not a city in inner, inner, you know, New York, you know, we have different budget needs and challenges and things like that. So I think we're, we're capable, you know, we can manage the numbers, but I think if the state's going to be looking at them, we should be looking at them. So when we have them in this SU, that would be fabulous. Also, I think as part of the budgeting process.
Yes, it is. And we've been talking about that at, at the administrative level. But it would be nice if the state would just tell us.
That seems to be a recurring theme in my life. I sent everyone my best estimate of our discussion on the, moving on to old business, sorry? Are we done with staff ratio discussions?
So we're not doing, looking at any data or anything?
We don't have it, she doesn't, it's not being compiled yet. I put it on there thinking maybe we'd get, we'd be at that point where we could look at it today. And I had to do this way early because Barb was out of the office room. Moving on to old business, I had sent out, after our last meeting, my best estimate of our conversation, I think I have a copy somewhere, of the Demerston Town School Board comments on the wellness policy and the transgender and non-conforming students policy. Anybody? Doesn't that have to be an email? It was like a month ago.
I probably.
I think that's, I think that'll probably be. So I just wanted to get everybody's blessing on that, because I think that should go back up, I have another one there, back up through the SU. I see head nodding. I always like that.
Yeah.
Looking for understanding.
Do we want to make a motion to adopt?
I think maybe that would be a good thing.
And pass on our comments to the, to the WSESU. I'll move, and then move to pass the comments as documented by Christina on the wellness policy and on the non-conforming student policy.
Is there a second to that? My second. Thank you, Emily. All those in favor of passing on the comments to the SU is moved by Michael, signify by saying aye.
So will those get in notes to Barb somehow?
Yes.
I sent those. Okay. Yeah, you have an electronic copy.
Yeah, I'll send it along with the minutes and I'll ask that it get appended to the, to the minutes instead of.
Thank you. And then the WSESU executive committee proposal. For those of you recollecting, there has been some discussion at the WSU level of increasing the responsibility of the finance committee, morphing it into a finance executive committee at the WSESU level. And so boards are asked to go back and discuss that and give their comments, feed their comments up through the SU.
I think it's needed, you know, having served on that committee, I think the clarity of understanding what the committee is responsible for would really help, particularly when, you know, challenging issues come up, so.
And so in your mind, it would be important to have a different, of the finance committee and the executive committee be one, or?
Yes, yes. Because it, it was actually operating like that when we had challenging issues, you know, or different issues come up. So we would always take it back to the full SU board, you know, and that, the executive committee wasn't making any decisions, you know, that always went back to the SU board, but it would be, I think it would definitely help, I don't know, streamline with, with that particular role clarified, you know, for them. So it's not de facto that it's an actual responsibility.
I'd be curious to get the input of the new admiral at the helm as to what, how you.
So one of the things that I feel is important, and I think there are a couple of other boards that have also requested this, that we have an actual sort of job description. So what exactly is it that that board would do? And I feel like when we see that, then it would be easier to be able to say, oh, yeah, I can get behind that, or, you know, really, do we want this, this way? So I know right now with budget season, it's a little, there's already plenty on the plate, plenty on the plate, but it has been on every agenda. They come back to it and say, we're not, we're not letting it go, it's just that right now, budget's the priority. So I feel like you'll come back to it, and I'm hoping that that's eventually what you'll get.
Yeah, I'm going to echo your thoughts that it would be nice to have a well-articulated statement of really what the roles and responsibilities would be, and frankly, I haven't seen one sitting on the, sitting on the finance committee right now. And I think it's a little premature to even have that conversation, have this conversation with, with our, until we see that, because the proposal, I think, has changed a couple of times, at least it appears to have changed from, from the input people are making at the meetings, even, even in the short amount of time that's allowed to talk, you know, allocated to talk about it during budget season. It seems still ill, I hesitate to say ill-conceived, but ill-developed at the present moment. And I just, one other thing that I got to say bothers me is that, I just got to put it out there, that it seems like the finance committee in particular has difficulties getting the minutes out on time, and it's a particular frustration and, you know, sitting on a, and being a member of a board like that, that's a subcommittee of a larger board and of different boards, it's a, it's a concern for me, and I think we need to start showing some executive functioning to become an executive committee, I think maybe that would be my
Just to give you perspective, they didn't use to publish any minutes at all.
That's even worse. So, going, going from terrible to bad is not necessarily good, so I, I think it's a tough, you know, just from my perspective of.
I was their clerk for many years, so.
Okay. Just being the clerk of this board and wanting to make sure that we're complying with the open meeting law for every single meeting that we have, be it an alternative subcommittee meeting, or a work session, or a pre-K forum, or a meeting where we're meeting with other boards as a quorum, I think it's important. And I think it's important not only for, for complying with the law as it presently exists, but I think it's also important for the public transparency function.
Yes.
And it makes it a lot more palatable to, at me as a member of a board and as a member of the public, to understand that there is a place where I can go to get clearly what's going on at a meeting and get a handle on, on, you know, what that body's doing, so.
Yeah, it might be something to look at across the SU with other committees, you know, I don't know how the high school handles their minutes.
Yeah, they have different, like, careers on a committee and things.
Right, but, yeah, it'd be interesting to sort of take a survey and see how well we're doing as a unit, so.
Any other thoughts, concerns from the board first, and then I'll open that up? I do have just one thought, though, is that in my life, I've known a lot of people that are good with finances and then good with executive, just sort of personnel, legal, executive decisions, and sometimes I've known people that are good at both. And so I'm just wondering, when you're sending one person up there with maybe two skill sets, is that the best, would it be better suited and, that's sort of a, who the people are we have, but when you're nominating someone to do something, is like, are they a, you know, CFO or a CEO, I guess is the question of representing your board? And so that's the only concern I would have, is that how do you get the best talent supporting you to do what you need from us?
I think that's where Michael's point about having a well-defined roles and responsibilities for an executive committee would, would really come into play.
But if they're the same committee and you're only sending up one person, it's, as opposed to having two.
Well, then you would want, you would want to elect.
Somebody who's got votes.
Right.
And, and we may decide it doesn't work that way, that we want something different, that we want two committees or.
I'll open that up to public comment now. Dan's been shooting his hand up.
Okay, I can't see him right here.
Help me understand, I don't recall that there is an executive or has been an executive committee of the issue.
I, my understanding is, and of course, you know, I'm new to this as well, my understanding is that if there have been any issues that have come up in the past, it has gone first through the finance committee. There was a negotiations committee, the finance committee, a lot of different committees that.
Sorry.
The question is, if we put all those together and have one committee that oversees a few different things.
Okay, so, and, and I know you're new in your role, but you're not new, and neither am I, and neither's everybody at the table, but, so they're, they're really, my question was, is there or has there been an executive committee?
There has not been.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And I, so I guess, I've always considered the SU board to be more of an executive committee because they are a subset of all the member boards. So I, I like what I heard that it's premature at best right now to be even having this discussion, but to have a little background, I think, about there's never been an executive committee, and how has the SU board functioned in the past, I think is helpful. And I'll be curious and like to be engaged as this plays out, but one comment I'll make now, because maybe in a few months, people will have forgotten, but we just had a pretty big vote of five towns, and it seems that people aren't so keen on consolidation of control. And I think we ought to keep that to heart, and I would ask you as a board to take that to heart, that I don't think folks were, were keen on reducing control.
The example that I'll give, and I have to be careful about this, but now that the SU employs more people, all the special ed teachers, all the special ed paras come under the SU umbrella when there are employment issues, pulling together the full WSESU to make determinations on employment may not be practical. And so that was the first indication this year that we may want a smaller group looking at that, and so actually, the WSESU full board gave permission to the finance committee to meet and make that employment decision. But that was the first time that I thought, oh, do we need something? And maybe the same thing happens anytime something like that comes up, that it goes to the full WSESU board and the board says, you act in our stead.
I, I think to, if I may continue, I think to piggyback on what Christina said, that, and she didn't say this, but she talked about maybe that there's a benefit to having multiple committees so that you have expertise and you don't have to abuse the free time of one person to, to deal with all of the hats on, on one committee. But many organizations have personnel committees, and I think that might make a lot of sense for the topic you're hitting on. But again, it sounds like there'll be a lot more opportunity to, to discuss this. Thank you.
Judy?
Well, I don't have too much more to say because you said it, you said it, and you said it, but I have said it in the past, that I really am not in favor of consolidating more control in fewer hands at the SU level. And, and I think what Christina said is that they're different mindsets. The finance committee is a very busy committee, and I think, I hadn't thought of a personnel committee, but I think something like that, different people, there's a, there's, I don't know how many SU members we have, but we should be taking advantage of, of more than just five people.
And I think it's a burden.
Yeah, I think it is. I think you're right. So I, I agree with what you've all said here.
Any other thoughts, comments, input? Moving on. Act 46 vote and steps forward. I think we all are aware of the Act 46 vote. And so I will update you on the alternative structures group. We actually had a meeting the Thursday after the vote. We had a meeting in Vernon on Thursday to discuss steps forward to creating an alternative governance structure. It wasn't, our first meeting, there's been a lot of discussion. I honestly thought and pretty much wrote the agenda that it would be what's Demerston going to do meeting, so there were a lot of questions flying about what everyone was going to do that I had exactly, you know, not even 48 hours to think about as. that I had exactly, you know, not even forty-eight hours to think about, as did everybody else in the room. We have Brattleboro representatives, they have an official subcommittee, all of the Vernon School Board was there, and representatives from Putney and from Guilford's citizen representatives. We are looking at trying to find ways to accomplish many of the benefits that the merger would have provided. We're looking at how to do school choice, how to help schools that are in trouble, and how to be more efficient, and how to be, provide more equity for our kids, and thinking about things from the bottom up. Anybody is welcome to join and attend, everybody can sit at the table, this is not a study committee, so there is not, it can operate in a different fashion than a study committee could, because it's not limited by statute to people, statute by, to people at the table, so everyone is welcome. The larger becomes, the more whoever gets the benefit of sharing that has to restrict comment and, and limit the time so we can accomplish things. We've created subcommittees for transparency, to, to get articles out to the newspaper, to make sure that people are informed and do outreach. We have created a committee to look at equity, and the current thing that we're looking at, and there's other AGSs coming through that we can now be inspired by. I don't hesitate to use the word plagiarize, but use some of the ideas. And so I think Franklin Northwest is keeping their study committee sort of formed to be a group looking at that equity. And so we have talked at the AGS level about creating something where the leadership council concept from that continues on in a way that works together to look at equity at an SU level, and how we can work together to do better for our kids, both for equity and for efficiency. And that also has a nice benefit for transparency, especially in the Brattleboro schools and accountability, where they have five board members managing three schools and the ancillary schools they manage. So there's a lot of upside to that. We have a subcommittee looking at school choice. There are, there are SUs in the state that manage, it's a limited choice, just as it was in the articles. So I want to be clear that it's, there's a certain number limit. Jody, do you wanna add on to that?
I just wanna say, when you say school choice, people automatically go.
Good point, thank you.
Okay.
School choice, as we had discussed under Act forty-six, would mean if you had a student who was attending Dummerston School and they moved to Brattleboro, could they stay in Dummerston School to finish out their seventh and eighth grade year? So it is not public school choice like Vernon has for seven through twelve into private school. Is that? And so this was one of the great benefits of the articles for families, that a school maybe isn't working out for a child, families have moved, and I could see it could help with efficiency. If you have a virgin in class in the town next door, and the parents are on the border, maybe they would want to have their children attend a Putney School, Central, Putney Central, versus adding a second teacher. So we have a committee looking at that and contacting those supervisor unions that are doing it, and understanding their contractual issues for that. Uh, no, 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 that is it for committees. And a committee looking, oh, and a committee looking at how we could fund some of this work, because one of the things that we have talked about doing is having BCTV film these, so. What did I forget, Jody?
We talked about a one percent fund.
Right, well, that's part of the equity, and we haven't really.
And then we also, when you mentioned Franklin Northwest as the study committee, it was an alternative governance strug, study committee to begin with, not a seven oh six B study committee. But my mind is right on that.
Yes, I think you're probably right. I, I'm not following all the, all the activities in the state, but.
You don't have time.
Yeah.
You're not retired.
I'm just getting to the bottom line on things, like, oh, look, you're doing that.
I, I think it would be great if these meetings could be broadcast, because the minutes don't tell you anything about, you know, the context of the conversations, and so I think that would be great, there was a way to find that funding.
Find those, find that funding.
We don't have state funding or grants, so.
Carol, we have any extra money?
Yeah.
No.
Pass a hat, my trust fund is not, you know, appearing. So yeah, I think that I, the transparency committee is really tasked with doing that. I think that's our hope, to try and do that, so, and I think we see a great benefit to that.
And anybody wants to donate to it, it'd be great.
Yeah. Or maybe ask boards to.
Boards to host one.
One and calibise one.
Calibise one, maybe we should take the lead.
That's a thought.
So we're meeting this.
Thursday.
Thursday here in Dummerston, just Carol.
I mean, we could just set up BCTV.
We could just keep her ready.
Keep going with our meeting and just go twenty-four hours at a time and get our money out of the meeting, so. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
I think that Dummerston should take the lead in this instance, and I would make a motion that we approve the funds to host BCTV on this Thursday's meeting, and pay for, out of our, what, we have money left in, like, the lawyer fund, the attorney fund, something like that? No?
I would go right to that school board.
The school board fund, because I think we have, perhaps we should consider as a board not filming every first meeting and moving some of that funds to, moving one of our filmings to that, to filming of, like, maybe the summer filming, we would move to cover a meeting of the alternative group.
Yeah.
I wanna make a motion for a one-time, one-time payment to BCTV for the meeting this Thursday.
Okay.
How much is it?
Hundred.
Out of our school board fund.
Discussion? I'm not sure I can still, I can get them at this point, but I will try first thing tomorrow, assuming that the motion carries. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve a hundred dollars to film this Thursday's alternative governance structure meeting? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
My meeting is at what time?
Six thirty.
Here.
Here, somewhere. Sorry, I meant to ask you that today.
Explain.
Any other business? I wore everybody out in the pink pants.
So for the alternative governance, have, have we got a, has the group got a timeline?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, yes and no. It has to be out by December twenty-sixth.
Right.
Brattleboro has requested that we get it to them by December, something in the first ten days, I think.
Their last meeting of the year is December twenty.
But they wanted to have it.
So they want it ahead of time.
They wanted by, she's, she wanted by December sixth, and I think that's probably overly optimistic. You know, we're meeting every week, we're meeting next Tuesday as well, and really trying to put things on paper. We are very lucky to have all of the study committee work to build on, and ideas to build on. I think in terms of the major structure, December sixth would be a reasonable time, and then there's a lot of data to collect, there's a lot of taking in board input, so there has to be time for doing that. I think Christmas afternoon is gonna be when I'm doing a lot of that. So, you know, I think it, it is an iterative process, because unlike the articles, there is a period of back and forth with the secretary, too, on that, so it's a little different process. It's not like this is written in stone, referred to. I'm also going, thank you for prompting me on the timing, is I would also very much like us to bring it to an advisory vote in front of the town, so that we can have a forum and discuss it with the town, and understand if we have, if it has town support, or if people just like to vote no.
Would we do that at town meeting?
And so that has been the thought, that town meeting would be the time to do that, and that's in the middle of the secretary's comment period. I feel like I can't even ask Lori to do another vote on anything, and town meeting seems like a reasonable time to do that, but I'd love to have that discussion as a group.
Why wouldn't you just warn it as a, a separate article?
It would be warned as a separate article, but during town meeting, and rather than hold a separate meeting.
Separate special meeting.
Oh, a whole separate meeting, okay.
Rather than hold a whole separate meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I think town meeting would be the natural place, but unless somebody had other thoughts, I'm completely.
Get back this in the timeframe, but I think we'll have to look at.
I think the only problem with that is, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm, I think the only problem with that is just the sheer volume of information. I know that when we, at the last town meeting, when we were doing a presentation, I mean, we're in the morning, because we were in the afternoon last year, so we'll be in the morning at, in March, but, you know, it might be better to consider breaking it out to specifically focus on that, and, you know.
As a separate meeting?
Yes, maybe in February or something.
Maybe we could do a forum beforehand to explain and train, and then, you know, have the discussion sound like a food town.
And you just said February, but I wonder about even a little later, because you do have, you have that opportunity after December, before May thirty-first, to do that back and forth with the secretary and the board of ed. So you still have time after you've submitted something to be able to supplement, amend, make complete changes. So it gives you just a little bit more time to have a really complete plan, and then you can present that afterward.
Yeah, and that way it would keep budgets separate from, yeah.
Just, obviously, you, where you want, but.
Maybe the, maybe the town meeting could be the forum part, and then a vote later on, because you're gonna have more bodies there, townspeople there to talk to about, and then put the seed that we're gonna have a vote in two weeks, or, you know, we've won this vote for. But you're certainly gonna have a captive audience, you know?
And if we have morning, they're caffeinated and they have Lester's Donuts, so.
It seems like there are always more people there in the morning, and lunch people.
It's time to, you know, kind of get away.
We don't have to schedule that now, I'm just planting that, that thought seed right now. It's helpful to have that digested down. The other discussion that we had, and we have a little bit more benefit, because we have such an engaged population, and we did have surveys and so many forums, is to have some sort of, you know, one option, one discussion was either another survey. I'm not sure I really wanna go down that path personally, or maybe a hearing to hear. You know, I've given testimony at the state level for hearings on various, you know, business-related things, and so to give people one minute to talk about why they voted yes or why they voted no, I think both answers are really important, so we can figure out how we could get to some kind of AGS that might, or maybe they prefer the state's plan, I don't know, but, you know, to give people that opportunity to have input sometime before too long, and I wanted to get board input on that. I mean, we're a little bit further ahead of understanding our vote, I think, than a lot of communities, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to get public input. I'm thinking about maybe doing something attached to another meeting.
I think if you wanted to do, I mean, my preference would be to really collect input. I would have that, I would suggest that the governance, the subcommittee go town by town and do, and solicit, have hearings in each town, to really make it convenient for the townspeople to, from each area, to step in.
Oh, no, definitely, we would do it in each town. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to give you that impression, but I think it's important that the board hears that input, too, to be the body that's saying, yes, this is what my town is saying, this is what the governance AGS looks like. And so.
You could maybe tag them on into regular school board meetings in those communities.
Right. So how does the Dummerston board feel about more of their personal life being invested in a public forum? After I just had a public forum.
So.
I think that's why we're here.
So, any suggestions about when a good time to do that might be?
Soon. November twenty-eighth.
November twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Is that your regular meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's our work session.
John. Yeah, you have John, but if you could do him first.
Right, do him first, let him get out of here, and then.
Hold on.
Do we have like a, a simple question that we wanna ask, or way that we wanna? I think we keep it simple and broad, and my, if we're, we're looking to gather information, what do, what is everyone else's thought?
My mind is, a hearing is.
So we're gonna call it a hearing?
That's kind of one idea. I am not wedded to any ideas, I'm looking for ideas from the floor, but an idea that was floated out was a hearing that you could hear, and, you know, limit people's time, but to have people say what their vision for governance is in a very organic way, I guess.
The only concern I have about having on the twenty-eighth is the short notice, and how do we get the word out to, to our community that we're soliciting their.
Input.
Input on the vision for.
We could go to the next meeting in December.
What if we were to do two opportunities for people to come, and schedule like a half an hour for hea, like, for hearings before the November twenty-eighth, and, I mean, I hate to put it with the budget meeting, but.
Good idea.
Yeah, maybe, maybe people would hear about it, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but maybe people would hear about it and decide, oh, I wish I, oh, you do have a chance, the very next meeting, be two weeks.
What was your thought?
I like the thought of, like, short meetings, like, half hour, but I wonder about, can you do one here in the morning? So if there are parents dropping off their kids, because parents, tonight was the first time I've seen parents here. And going to the Act forty-six meetings in pretty much every town, I don't see the parents, and they've got skin in the game.
Yep.
And I don't know, I mean, it wouldn't mean all of you, but it could mean one of you. What do you, what do you think? What are your concerns? What are you looking for?
The problem with having them done in the morning is everybody's going off to work.
Yeah.
You know?
Carol still have time.
I mean, if we, if we did, if we did something like we did tonight, where there's childcare.
Yeah.
And really advertise that.
And keep it at a, so that they can still get home to their.
At like a five-thirty to six-thirty or something, so that it's not so late, and maybe get a big, couple of big pizzas or something. Leave the children, so that.
Yeah.
So what, I, no, I like, I like that idea, so maybe doing it November twenty-eighth, and then sometime in early December?
So do you wanna put something in the agenda that's along the lines of there will be a half hour opportunity to, you know?
Listen to public input?
Right.
To voice, or for public to voice input on.
The vision.
Vision for alternative governance structure.
Right. And I think that part of it will be important, because we don't want to hear, it to become a debate about Act forty-sixth.
Right.
Because we all know, we've been hearing that for a while.
Yes. Keep it. And so when should, so I'll do that before the agenda for eleven twenty-eight, so some other time, perhaps the following week, before budget season, for an earlier slot, or we could do it before the budget meeting. Everybody does not have to go, well, it's hard on them.
If it's a half hour, let's do it before the budget meeting.
Why don't we see what, why don't we see what the turnout's like? Why don't we see what the turnout's like at November twenty-eighth, and then, and then we can, you know?
Save for later box.
Right.
What do, is there anybody else thinking about that?
Are we gonna do five-thirty on twenty-eighth?
I think a half an hour may be too short.
Yeah. Yeah, and I know, and from the study committee perspective, I know folks had issues with being limited on what, how, when, and how much they could speak, so I think it'd be better if it were more open-ended.
So let's say five-thirty on eleven twenty-eight. Oh, but that doesn't get John Gagnon here.
Well, we have a hard stop.
Yeah, yeah, at six-thirty.
At six-thirty. And he, he's got it now, that might be a quarter set up, he'll, he'll be okay.
And you have childcare?
I can offer my.
We'll just wait till after your report's back about spending the evening with my kids before you volunteer him. Me, Max, has been doing too much.
He'll be thrilled, I know. He must be a community service outlet, yes. Yes.
Caroline's probably available, so there'll probably be a, maybe a larger childcare turnout. So if anybody else has another.
Maybe you could get Sophie to come with Caroline.
Okay.
See, because Dan just left.
Could you be good, because girls' practice would have gotten out.
Oh, well, good.
Oh, so that's Tubs' tails on? Oh, yes, we could get some of them, yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else?
We'll take care of getting babies.
Okay.
You're going to take care of it?
Thank you, Joe Carroll. So I will add that to the agenda. Any other agenda items for the next meeting? We have John Gignan visiting to discuss Guilford's.
Pre-K.
Pre-K program with us, and their, help us benefit from their learning experience.
I think it would be nice to, not, well, not to make the meetings any longer, but I, just talk about directives for budget development that we, as a board, would like.
For the 11/28 meeting?
Yes.
Can you just flesh that out a little bit more from my entire brain?
Well, I know Joe Carroll goes into budget development with a certain mindset, but, you know, if we are, want to give, you know, like specific directives, level funding, level service, I mean, I mean, that's, that's a type of conversation I think the board should have, and would help provide a little guidance to, or whatever you want, Joe Carroll.
Oh, that'll be it with me.
I was hoping, I do meet next week, just to sort of give him that, some of the state requirements for the budgeting information, but I know this is not the time of year to ask him, but to just say, with this amount of numbers as a preschool, and you ran the budget as is, what would it look like? I mean, that's the one thing that's going to give me an idea of forward movement or breaks, is otherwise, it's very hard to.
I think we have, in my, just in my opinion, I think maybe we have to wait until we start getting this survey data, sort of taken care of a little bit, to understand what our numbers are and what our incremental ADM would be.
That's what.
So then we could, oh, so you think we give him that information? Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think it's safe to say we could say eight kids would be, I think that would be more than safe.
Okay.
I want to see what if the budget was like with eight kids. And nothing else changed, you know, assuming everything stays the same, eight kids next year.
What is that going to do for a budget? I, I love that idea.
I think you've got some real movie mover and shakers here tonight, and I think you could put them to work on doing some things.
Yeah. It's, yeah, with, or less, with what Janice has said, you know, I forgot about Karen, Joe, so, you know, there's no question.
Well, I think it just helps inform our discussion as we go down this path. I think we all love that idea, except for the exception of Frank Ruffin.
I know. I know. I mean, all I can do is just quote him, man.
Yeah, I do feel like he probably has good numbers, having done it now twice with, you know, four times now, or whatever, how many times he's done it, he probably has a decent, and is all, we all understand it's not the be all and end all, it's just a first pass. I think that's an easier thing to ask for.
With him on, Monday, I think.
I can tell you exactly what Joe Carroll.
Yes.
You are the end run of the ship.
You are meeting with Frank on 11/21.
On Tuesday?
Yep. What's in my handy chart, but I don't leave one out.
Organization.
I know, I got to know where I'm supposed to be.
Okay, so that is different than when I, yeah.
Maybe I'll have to see what Frank is.
I know. It might be totally different. This is updated, it's up 10/25, so. My draft was updated October 25th, so it's.
Oh, so, yeah, we've done two email back.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's going to be here, so I.
So hopefully we can have something to look at on 11/28 to that end. Okay. Any other? Thank you all, it's been.
Move, readjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Tori, thank you, BCTV. We've got our money's worth out of y'all today.